...every day.
I don't.
Go, gavel.
Gavel all this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. And a moment of silence. Thank you. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being videotaped for cable. I'd like to start off with the approval of the minutes from the June 12, 2017 school committee meeting.
Moved.
Second. Moved and seconded any discussion? All those in favor?
Good.
Great, thank you. I'd like to welcome our student rep Haley Ryan. Thank you so much for coming to represent your entire student body and over the summer too, so this is very impressive. Thank you so much for being here tonight. We'll go right on to personnel.
Personnel.
After welcome.
Welcome back everyone.
Thank you.
I know you missed me over the summer.
Yes.
Well, I missed you. Alright, so we have one appointment that I want to introduce and then a couple retirements that we'll talk about for a minute. So, we have a new student, excuse me, Director of Student Services Cory Michaelazik. He comes to us from the Norton Public Schools where he was Assistant Sped Director in the Norton Public Schools. He comes highly recommended. We talked to a lot of people and we, he was the number one choice, the top choice of our search committee that we had back in the spring. So Cory started with us July 24th and worked a week with Hope Hanscom and they trained together, worked together a little bit and transitioned and he has so far been doing a pretty good job. So Cory, I don't know if you want to get up and say a few words and say hi to...
To the camera.
The committee and viewing audience.
We talked to Oakley said, I started July 24th and I feel very fortunate for working in West Bridgewater Public Schools. The parents that I've met, committee members that I've met, other teachers that I've met, it's been a great experience so far. Two things I've realized is one, that we have a powerful student-centered leadership team and the second thing is that Dr. Oakley is an awful dancer. So, but yeah, right, I can just walk back to my seat now. No, but in reality, you know, in working for Dr. Oakley, you know, the last month and getting close to the leadership team and the philosophy, it's, we're very much aligned and moving, continuing to move the district forward. Dr. Hanscom was a wonderful woman and we got to work a week together and the systems that she has in place are really solid, so I'm looking to kind of pick up where she left off and continue that progress and I just can't wait for the school year to get started. Sitting in the office is kind of horrible for me, so just be getting, waiting to go into the classrooms and visit classrooms and visit students and talk with parents, that's my number one priority is the kids and the families. So, I'm really looking forward to starting my journey in West Bridgewater. Thank you.
So we have some, we have some retirements that, the first one came just really this past month, Sandra Lang, who was a middle, senior high school instructional assistant, mostly middle school most of her career. Actually been with the West Bridgewater Public Schools for 30 years in this role in middle school. She also was a West Bridgewater resident and her kids went through the system. And yeah, I'm that old that I had both of her kids who are now adults and have kids of their own. So, but actually Sandy and I started the same year in the West Bridgewater Public Schools, so maybe that means I should be...
No.
But Sandy has always been a great resource to the kids in the middle, senior high school, especially in the middle school, helping them and working with them over the years. So she will be missed and we just found out about it this year, excuse me, this summer. Sue Moore, fourth grade teacher, is leaving us retiring at the end of November because she needs to work to her birthday in order to get her full retirement benefit and that's how the MTRS sets it up, that they have to work till her birthday. And you know that she was also a West Bridgewater resident and was a long time teacher or teaching assistant in the REEDS program that we have here for many years. And then went back to school when her kids got older, got her elementary ed degree and came back, student taught here and ended up in the fourth grade. Honestly, I can say she is one of the best teachers I've ever seen, elementary teachers. She is an unbelievable teacher. I was hoping that she would stay longer than the 10 years, I know she started later, but when she sent her letter in last year, we were all kind of like, oh. We didn't get to have her that long because she started later in her career, but she's wonderful. I don't know if any of your kids had her or if you just heard stories of her, but being able to do walkthroughs and see her as a teacher, she's unbelievable. So she'll be leaving us at the end of November. And what we did in that situation is she was a fourth grade teacher, but so that we didn't have the fourth graders having two transitions, coming from the McDonald School to the Howard, plus then losing a teacher in November, we moved her to fifth grade and one of the fifth grade teachers wanted to be in fourth grade anyway, so there'll be, and then we'll be interviewing for teachers for that fifth grade position probably right near the start of the school year and they can have hopefully a week overlap to transition together. So she will be leaving us. And then the third one that will be leaving sometime in October, end of October, Mary Bissari, longtime speech and language pathologist with the West Bridgewater Public Schools. She did most of her work between the Spring Street School and the Howard School and she again has to go to her birthday. Mary, kids love Miss Mary and I see her in the kindergarten because she's with those little kids and they just totally are completely engaged by her. You can tell the love that she has for the kids that she works with and I know that she'll be missed not only by the families and the kids, but by her colleagues because of her great sense of humor and her stories and I mean, she's always leading things like if there's a sweater contest or something like that or doing the retirement songs at the Howard School for the, for when people are leaving and getting things going. So she will be very missed by, by all and so we just want to congratulate them and thank them for all they've done for kids of the West Bridgewater Public Schools over a lot of years. So sad to see them go, but they're probably excited to go onto this new chapter in their life, so. That's personnel.
Excellent, thank you. And back to you on the superintendent.
Yeah, see this is that, that meeting that's like the all about me meeting that we need to move it to all about you, but. So summer update, we had a number of successful programs this summer. We had our regular summer school that we have at Spring Street, Spring Street School. It was six weeks, Monday through Thursday and Kathy Marble runs that program, she coordinates that program. We had successful Ready, Set, Go and Chris McInnany still does that, still does that program for the little ones, kids love that. We had Let's Go, which is a very successful and big program at the Howard School and Sarah O'Donnell Ren runs that. She does that also the vacation camp, but they go all over the place. I can't believe the field trips that they go on on Let's Go. They go everywhere. It's such a successful program, the kids love it. And we also had a STEAM camp that was the first time we had it and from what I've heard from different kids that went, they really, really enjoyed it and hopefully we can expand that type of work. It was at the middle, senior high school, but it was for the younger kids and it was successful. We, I will say Julie Hamlin and her team have been working their butts off this summer. As a matter of fact, it got to the point halfway through the summer that anytime Julie saw me, she ran the other way because every time I saw her, I'm like, so, you know that thing at, and she's like, ah. But um, so they did a lot of improvement, some of the bigger ones, they finished the concession stand, you can see that the parking lots are getting done in the road behind the Howard School and just mostly a lot of their stuff is just sprucing things up. It's not just the cleaning, although they take every bit of furniture out of every classroom and clean thoroughly and strip and wax every floor in the entire district, which itself is a lot of work, but then they do all the things they can't get to during the year like the painting and they did a huge project and you might not, I think if you really look at it, you notice it, but all the siding and stuff that was rusting and peeling at the Spring Street School and that was a lot of work to scrape that and do that work and it looks unbelievable and it just, and now with the parking lot, it really gave it a nice fresh look. So there's a lot of, lot of work that they do, but she does it with a smile, even when she's running away from me, she's doing it with a smile and, and they do, they do a great job as they, they always do. Back to school, we have new hires that we put in place and those people will be coming to our September meeting because we like to get them to start school first. Then they come to the September meeting, you people can put names to faces and they get embarrassed because we make them go up and say a few words, but it's easier for them to say a few words once they already have their classes and stuff going. It's a different group this year, it's not a lot of classroom teachers, it's a lot of support staff type positions. We hired a behavior specialist or a BCBA, a middle, senior high school, school psychologist, the school psychologist at the end of the year was moving away back with her family to New York, so we didn't know that was coming, but we hired someone that I think is going to be really, really good. We did hire Mary's replacement as a speech and language pathologist, but she won't start until October, seventh grade science teacher, special needs teacher at the McDonald School and several new instructional assistants. So the, you know, really only one classroom teacher, but from year to year you have different, different hires or different groups of people. So they started already with their mentoring program and their induction and they met their mentors and basically Kyla Daly gave them the ins and outs of the West Bridgewater Public Schools the first day and then they met their mentors the second day and had some time to work with their mentor in their school. So they already started that, they'll keep up that program throughout the year. You know that teachers then start Tuesday and on Wednesday, the sixth, grades one through 12 start and then kindergarten and preschool start on September 11th. And I see Haley Ryan sitting there and in her mind, she just smiled and I think what she's thinking is, I'm signing my senior year, so I hope that we have so many snow days because we don't have to make them up.
I am genuinely excited for the start of school this year. Like we were talking about it the other day, it's going to be a good year, we're ready.
Good. She's saying that and she has all the college applications to get together. Remember, do it early, get it done and then you can enjoy the rest of it, right?
Oh yes, exactly.
Good. It is going to be, it's going to be a great school year and our theme this year is going to be Year of the Wildcat and that's what I'll talk about the first day and we'll be doing some cool things the first day for both, both teachers and kids. So I think we're ready to go. The bus routes were posted or maybe posted tomorrow?
Yes, I sent them to...
Yeah, I put on Facebook that they'll be posted by tomorrow. They took a little longer this year because remember that we've got an extra bus. And so getting an extra bus, you really need to reroute everything and you know, we're hoping that, well, we know it will alleviate some of the longer routes. Is it perfect? I think it's going to take a little time to tweak it and fix it and even this year may not be perfect, but then we can work on it in the year. Because the other thing is in the town of West Bridgewater, it's a little town, but there's so much more traffic than there used to be, especially getting from one end to the other. And there's all these new subdivisions and houses going in at the outskirts of town, which is down Manly Street towards the Brockton line, there's a bunch of streets and subdivisions going in there and then down Scotland Street towards Bridgewater. So the buses just have to, I mean, so we're not getting that many more kids, we're just spreading out. And the other thing is when we went to full day K, you know, half the kids used to get dropped off in the, at noon and the others at two and now everyone is, so it is more kids on the bus because of that. So this extra bus should alleviate a lot of it. The main thing that we're really trying to do is make sure that the Rose L. kids, you know, sometimes they were getting picked up at 3:30, they got off school at three, they were getting picked up at 3:30 and then it was taken 45. So what we're hoping is, you know, one of the last stops will be 3:30 instead of getting picked up at that time. So I do ask for people to be patient for the first month because it's probably, the first week will be fine and then the kindergarten starts, so it slows everything down again and it's not, and you understand why, because it's the first time that kids are getting off a bus as a kindergartner, it's the first time that the parents are putting their kids on a bus. So the first couple weeks, they're saying, getting pitches and saying goodbye and all, and I mean, they're kindergarten kids, you know, you've ever seen them walk up the stairs of the bus, they can be like practically climbing it like, you know, with their, with their big backpack on, you know, and then people are like, why are the buses late? Well, you gotta give them time. So I always ask, give us the month of September, we'll work it out. We've got new drivers because we had several bus drivers retire last year, so we, not only we have new drivers, we have new routes and we have new stops. It's going to take a good month to get used to it, so people need to be patient and bear with us and it will get better. Month of September is always hectic that way. And if you don't think there's more traffic, just leave one of our buildings at 2:30-ish or even around that time and head towards the highway, head towards Market Basket and you'll see how much traffic there is on Route 106. And the buses from one town side to the other have to somehow get across there, so. But I think this, this extra bus will make a big difference.
So all the buses have been renumbered then because we have bus, like our handicap accessible bus?
The handicap accessible bus is still going to be five.
Oh, okay.
We don't want to change that.
Okay, good, I like that.
That's still five, so basically just added a six.
So we have a six, so one, two, three, four, bus five stays the same.
Yep. And bus five, because of the needs that we have of certain kids and the grades that they're at now, because that adjusts every year, will actually be, especially at the high school, making some runs for some of the far out stops.
And the turn around.
Yeah, so, yeah, or like...
It's no bus five, Howard is the only one that doesn't have a bus five.
Yeah, everyone else does. Okay, so Howard's the only one that doesn't have a bus five, but the others, especially there were a few on the outskirts, like I said, that for the high school, that he's going to take them because the bus was sitting there and no one was going to be on it, so it makes sense to add it in to some of those and to alleviate some of the distances. And like you said, oftentimes we do that because they have to go down a cul-de-sac and a regular bus won't fit or there's a turnaround and I know like with, with that Plain Street into, into Brockton, it can't, in order to turn around, they need something small. If you turn around, you know, you can't go, you'd have to go all the way into like the Davis School and Brockton turnaround, we weren't going to do that. So that's why we send bus five to those types of places.
Excellent, I like that we kept bus five to bus five.
Yeah, so we just have to get used to it. So that's back to school, so I think we're ready. It's going to be a good year. You already see the kids out on the fields.
No.
Preseason, double sessions, so, and they're pretty lucky because they have it this week. It's been nice, it could have been 95 degrees and humid and they're out there double sessions and the weather's been nice, so it's, it's going to be good.
Okay, let's start.
Alright, one more thing.
Do you say audit?
Can you say audit? Oh. So you remember last year at this time, I came to you and said, we've been selected to have the district school accountability audit, woo-hoo! And I heard it when I, I got the email and I was sitting at the beach on my vacation in August and I was like, are you kidding me? I was not looking to do this. So it put a lot of things on hold because we basically, they came the week after New Year's and so basically our whole first semester was making sure that we were following the indicators and, and all the paperwork that they want to see. They wanted to see documentation of everything. Well, we have the stuff, but it's not always at our fingertips, so we spent a lot of time. Kim had just started, I think she started last year, what, August 22nd? And it was like, okay, so you're going to go through every file, which is like, but she stayed. And we have the best evaluation files in the state right now. So it took them four and a half months to get us the report. They were here, it seemed like a good visit, they met with school committee, parent groups, lots of teachers because they just had meetings after school and teachers could show up and from every building they got a lot of teachers. They met with special needs staff, they met with curriculum leaders, the instructional team leaders, the department heads, the principals, so they really left no stone unturned. And our visit was a targeted district review, there's actually six standards that they can look at, but if you're targeted, you only get three of them. We got the student learning three, the others, the other three are human resources, leadership and finance, but this is what we got. So they targeted this area, so it was curriculum instruction, assessment, student support. And again, and one of the biggest things and biggest ways that they got information too was they went in and did walkthroughs and observed a lot of classes. The majority of the classes were at the middle, senior, high school. Some teachers were upset at Spring Street because they, they were expecting them and they didn't do a lot at Spring Street, which was too bad, but they, they did everywhere else do, do a lot of stuff. So you can go on the DESE website and see our whole report, but I'm just going to give you the overview. Honestly, was very happy with, with the results and I really believe, looking at the results and even the team said when they left, you have a great school system here. We, we are really lucky, we have great parents and teachers and kids and, and school committee and administrators and everyone works together and one of the biggest things they found, and if you read the opening of the report, one of the overall biggest strengths was the collaborative and collegial environment between the superintendent, the administrators, the school committee, the teachers, the students, the parents, and they felt that from all their groups. And one of the things they found is that if I said something and then they randomly asked the principals or the teachers or the parent, they all said it, which does show you that, okay, there, you know, there's transparency and it's collaborative and that is one of the major, and I think you can see that and I don't even think it's just within the school, but we also have that with the town departments and we get along as a town and you can see that during budget time. I mean, everyone's got their hand in the same pot and we're fighting against each other because everyone wants it, but we also know that, you know, we all have to do what we have to do, so we have to share and we do get along. And I believe that that's why West Bridgewater for the past several years and through the recession we went through and everything, did okay financially because we understood that, where some other towns around here didn't, they were going for overrides and stuff like that and we haven't had to stay there. So that was one of the biggest. The other thing was, and I'm going to read it because it's that they found that we have effective systems for curriculum development and implementation, monitoring student progress, using data to make instructional decisions and supporting students academically, socially and emotionally. Those were really the two major overall strengths. And I want to say that basically these reports, they give you strengths, they give you challenges and recommendations. In curriculum instruction, we got some strengths and we got a few challenges and recommendations. In assessment, we just got strengths. In student support, we just got strengths. So that's pretty good. And honestly, I'll tell you what the recommendations were for curriculum instruction, A, they're easy fixes and B, I could see that, you know, nobody's perfect, you can always improve. And someone had said to me, these people are coming out, they get paid to find things or it's a waste, a waste of their time and they didn't find anything in assessment and student support. I think that's unbelievable and what makes me really happy is student support without, I mean, we're here to educate kids. However, if kids don't have the right mental health, if they're not in a safe, comfortable environment, if they don't have, feel intellectually safe and emotionally safe and have the supports, then we can't do the teaching and learning. So the fact that we did the best in student support and you can read it, we have the most strengths and no recommendations, I think that is kudos to everybody from, you know, top to bottom in the West Bridgewater Public Schools because that's what it's about. If we don't support the kids, we can't do the teaching and learning. So I just think that's, I didn't see, when I read all those reports from other schools before, so I could see what they were going to look at, I didn't see anyone that didn't have any recommendations, so. In curriculum, they really applauded the integration of technology that we're seeing, the one-to-one initiative. They are three areas and you can sum it up in three areas of improvement for curriculum instruction. The first one is we need to do a better job with our written curriculum documents and make them more specific, dynamic. So for example, under the assessment in a, in a certain unit, someone may have just written tests, quizzes, like that's not specific enough. They want to know what is the actual assessment, what is it trying to find out, you know, why are you assessing these kids? In the instructional piece, don't just write group work, dah dah dah, what are the specific things so that we can meet all learners? And have links to the videos and all those things instead of just saying, we'll do some video, we'll do that, like what are they? So just more specifics. Okay, I kind of knew that that would, we would need this because I've been looking at the way that the state's been writing their curriculum model units. So we already started working on that this summer and everyone was doing science curriculum this summer, we went with the new model. To me, that's an easy fix, you know, so we'll work on that. The second was actually about administrators, they're not about teachers, it was that we need to do a better job with our evaluation feedback and what we write in our formative and summative evaluations to the teachers. They read them, they just fill, again, paperwork, we need to be more specific, we need some measurable or actionable recommendations, things that can really help teachers to improve and to be specific about it. So the administrative team this summer has already started working on that and we also did with the department heads to try to calibrate how, how we look at things in the classroom and what we'll do for trying to give more feedback. We actually put a rubric together so that we know exactly, we're all on the same page of what engagement looks like, what student-centered learning looks like, so, and then we can use that to give better feedback. So we're already started to work on that. So those two, I think, easy and it's paperwork. The third was the, I said they went into all the classrooms and they looked at it and they said in almost every classroom, the climate was respectful, the routines, the tone and the discourse was characterized by good climate. They also said that the teachers demonstrate high levels of knowledge, subject matter and content, they provide and refer to clear learning objectives, they implement lessons with high expectations aligned with the learning objectives and use appropriate instructional strategies well matched to the learning objectives. Team members of particular, took particular note of the extensive technology integration in many classrooms across the district. A lot of schools they go to, they're on one-to-one, but you can be one-to-one and not use it, but they liked that, they saw the instructional technology, they saw us using it. What was the thing that they noted was that we need to do a better job at differentiating instruction because in meeting the needs of all learners, we have a lot of different needs now. We have more social, emotional needs, we have more English language learners, we have more kids on IEP staying within the district and we have, we also want to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our high learners that, so that they are challenged. And so that's one thing that we want to work on this year is, and actually we're going to make it like a three to five year goal on working so that all teachers are on the same page and we're looking at different ways to help them differentiate their instructions. That's what our professional development will be on for the next three to five years and we've already started working on that. So those really were the, I mean... So, those really were the, I mean, nothing else, those were the three big recommendations. And to me, they're very fair, doable, and they make sense. And I think by doing them, we're going to even increase student achievement more than we have now. And so, it's nice to have outside eyes look at it and give you some feedback. So, if you do wanna read that, just, you can go to the DESE website. If you can't find it, I can send you the link. But, that's it in a nutshell. Kind of a big nutshell, but-
But it's good news. I mean, they came back, we had the feeling that we were doing well. They came back and gave us that reassurance, and then also came up with some good, actionable things, so all those things that you're working on, that I have confidence you probably would've been working on them anyways in the future, but jumpstarts it, and that's great. I'm glad they added value. It's good to see that these audits that we're paying for as taxpayers-
Yeah, that we get something out of it that's usable.
That they're helping, yeah.
Usable.
That's a good, that's just good stuff. All right, great. Thank you so much for summarizing it too. The full report, I'm sure it would be good to read to anyone who's interested.
Well, if you ever can't fall asleep some night and you need something, maybe you could read the full report.
Yeah, I wanna see all the blanks where they didn't have the challenges or recommendations. I think that's, I think that's really impressive. Okay, great. Mr. Mike, Michael, no. I was gonna say-
By the way, it's over.
Michael Lason?
So, I guess, who committee I'm asking for something, right? So, you know, my first week here, what I did was review the homeschool application. So, in your packet, you have a list of homeschool applications for 15 students. I did review all of them, and they do comply with our district policy for homeschooling students. If you have any questions, let me know.
Can I get a motion to approve the homeschool applications as presented?
Second? Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
These are all pretty much from last year. There's nothing new.
Correct.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
The elementary student handbook, Mrs. Glady.
So, Mrs. Spencer and I worked on it over the summer. Really not a lot of changes, just wanted to clarify.
Were you directing the band? Didn't she look like she was directing the music or something?
So, we worked on it over the summer. It was really more just clarifying some things, we didn't change much, except for our Director of Student Services. Clarifying some things around technology. Children are getting devices earlier and earlier, other words, cell phones in elementary schools, so we had to clarify exactly what they can and can't do. So, we should have a one-page sheet that just says what the clarifying information was that we put in the handbook.
Can I get a motion to approve the questions as presented? Any questions or discussion about the items presented?
All right, all those in favor? Great. Thank you. All right, Mr. Badwell, the middle, senior high school student.
We don't have that many changes in the middle, senior high school handbook. The R and red in your packet, just to quickly summarize. National Honor Society, instead of going with the number of 87, when I surveyed other schools, most of them gave out of a four-point scale, so that's why we went to the 3.48, which equals the 87, which is a minimum for membership. Full-day, extended-day field trips, the day before, we're asking that students are there for the whole day and they're in good health leading up to an extended-day trip, so we're not sending kids off who are maybe home with a fever or some kind of illness that could jeopardize the other students on the trip. And then, we added a section on the emergency form, stuff that we sent home in the packet, but we really wanted to clarify to the parents, who can dismiss if they're on that form, some of the specifics, it's up to them to make sure they contact us if they're changing emergency contacts, or if there's any court orders in place. A lot of clarification as well.
Can I get a motion to accept the changes as presented?
Moved.
And any questions or discussion? I had one. So, it was about the adding, about having to be there the day before a field trip that's an extended day. So, would it ever have an occurrence where, you know, Friday, so take it back, you leave Monday for a trip. Thursday, you have a fever, you feel better Friday, but it hasn't been 24 hours, so I keep my child home on that Friday, 'cause that's per our handbook. Would that mean on Monday, they couldn't go?
That would be a little bit different. Usually, it's when they're leaving the next morning, they need all the opportunity, not 24 hours fever-free, but-
So, it's still, so what you're trying to restate there is just our policy that we have now, that you need to be 24 hours?
Yes.
Or, what, and I can't quote the thing, but 24 hours about the fever and there's other criteria too.
Correct.
So, it's just restating it there, so that people have that on top of their mind when they're sending their kids further away from home?
Definitely.
Okay. All right, perfect. All right, any other question? All those in favor? Okay, great. Thank you.
Are you doing the athletic handbook, or is that all set?
That, we can as well. I know I didn't have the changes in front of me, but that's, it was in the packet, I believe.
Was it in the packet, the athletic?
Yeah.
It was attached to the bot, was it all in?
Well, it's just, it's just up there, so-
Yeah, it was all together. Yeah, we have it. I'm not seeing what's written.
Did you do it, Mark? I did, it was bad.
I don't remember reading the athletic handbook.
I'm trying to see if there's anything in red that's standing out as I scroll through it for changes, but-
Where do you see the athletic handbook on?
It's part of the bookmarks, underneath the elementary, it says M-H-S-H student and athletic handbook.
So, what page does the athletic handbook start? I think we just got-
Like in the 40s?
I don't see the athletic handbook, I only saw the student handbook.
Are there a lot of changes, Mark?
No.
Any changes?
I believe the only thing was, because I was probably finished on the board by teamwork, which means they have to do the school sport prior to doing any outside athletic events.
Which is an MIA rule anyways, so it's just reciting some of the bigger rules.
If that's it, then it's up to you guys if you wanna vote for it.
I feel, I mean, that's within, it's within our guidelines of what we were following before anyway, so would someone like to make a motion to accept the change? I think, any discussion or questions? No? All those in favor? Okay, great. Thank you.
Finish your thoughts, we've been together so long.
That's perfect. All right. So, that goes on to our assignment of policy. So, we have one policy to assign. This will be a new separate policy, number 9,000 for meal charge. Well, we called it meal charge, but I think there's a little, there's, yeah, that would be part of the, whoever takes the new policy.
And you've worked with Ann Marie-
Yes.
-on the policy?
I can take this, 'cause I actually remember doing this a long time ago with, even before Ann Marie, I can't remember. Thank you. This is also new. Oh, I wrote down, I should write down my name. So, I'll take-
I just wrote down-
I wrote down, wrote down someone else's name. I just wrote down Ann Marie's name. All right, so I'll take that policy. And then, approval of policies, so policy 7,500, the school property use policy.
Yeah, we just, you know, came up so quick, you know, we just hadn't had no time over the summer, so it's gonna get pushed off to the next meeting.
Well, you had to first see the school property and scope it out.
That's true.
Scope it out, okay.
We just finished the concession stand.
The kids are out there right now, working on playing, so-
Okay, so-
The concession stand's been done for about a month.
Come on!
Do we wanna do that for September 18th? Okay, great. And the bullying policy, 8305.
Yes, I had taken that policy, just working with Dr. Oakley and the mandates that have come down, that have come down from the state with respect to this, and just trying to, I guess, take a look at this policy. It's been in effect for about three years now, since the initial implementation of it through the MARK, through the Bridgewater State College and so forth, and just trying to work out some better applications of it and make it a little bit more user-friendly, I think is a way to put it. We've added some specific language with respect to completing the incident report form, where we're now gonna utilize the Aspen portal for the administrators, which is gonna be a lot more, it's a lot more, I guess, conducive to the checks and balances, to make sure that it's proper documentation and reporting, because there's always that, you know, aspect of human error. So, utilizing the Aspen portal, which is what it's intended for, is kind of the goal. So, we've added language in to do that, and we've also added in some other language to make it clear as to the administration's or a teacher's responsibility about notifying parents or guardians via email, so that there's always that, again, that checks and balances. So, I think-
We just made it a little more user-friendly-
Yeah.
-to what we, you know, when the policy was first written, again, you write something, you don't really know if it works until you use it. And so, just different things are happening, it's like, this, it doesn't make sense for me to do that, even though it was written in the policy, I'd rather do this, you know. I think one of the things was contacting the parent by writing them a letter. It's like, no, pick up the phone and you could talk to the parent, they wanna hear your voice, you know, I mean, and I think the state came out with a model policy, so we took some of the things, but maybe, you know, maybe in a big district, you would do that, when you have, you know, like a Plymouth that has 8,000 kids. But, we don't have to do that, so we needed to tweak it to what, and have it fit what we have here, in our culture here.
And just the other point, I just wanted to make it clear that there's also a focus based on the collaboration with families, because that's a huge piece. So, that was, the parent education and the resources that are available has been expanded, and it's laid in the policy a little bit more clearer for the families, so that they know where to turn and what they're supposed to do, what their expectations are and so forth. It just kinda makes it a little bit more, as you said, Dr. Oakley, user-friendly, so. I would like to make a motion to approve the policy, 8305, the bullying policy as presented.
Great. Move. I have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, sir. And then, on the policies, just a side note, we are working on the, or we did agree last year to have all of our policies looked at, but we will continue to review our policies, even though they're gonna all be kind of revamped, so that Kim sent over all the information that they requested for that. I think actually, I still need to re-sign something.
Yeah, and I have to have you sign something?
Yeah, and, but, well, that process has started, but we keep going, like, this is how it will be for probably two years, I think, that we just keep going and plugging along, and then they'll get revamped for us. Warrants. We have number warrant 8A, dated, it's not August 31st yet, is it? August 31st, 2017? But we haven't gotten to August 31st yet, right? Okay. For $62,272.33 will be paid on that date. And may I get a motion?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, great. Thank you. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public forum. Would anyone like to address the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to our upcoming dates. So, district-wide, on September 5th, we have teacher's first day. On September 6th, the first day for grades 1 through 12. September 8th is a half-day for grades 1 through 12 for teacher in service. At the middle, senior high school, on August 31st, the new student orientation for grades 8 through 12 from 9 to 10 a.m., of which I did get my connect ed today, by the way, that had all the dates. Grade 7 from 1 p.m. to 2:30 p.m. On September 14th, the curriculum night for grades 7 and 8 from 5 to 6:30, for grades 9 through 12 from 6:45 to 8:15. At the Howard School, on August 31st, will be grade 4 parent orientation at 10 a.m. And at the Roseell McDonald School, on September 5th, grade 1 meet and greet from 8:30 to 9 a.m. On the spring, at the Spring Street School, on September 6th and 7th, will be kindergarten assessments. On September 8th, will be kindergarten orientation, and the first day of kindergarten on September 11th, and preschool, sorry, preschool. Give us a call if you need us. Our next meeting date is Monday, Monday, September. We need something related to the school. Monday, September 18th at 6:30 p.m., right here at the middle, senior high school learning commons. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Any final discussion? All those in favor? All right, great. Thank you, Haley. Yay! Very well.